We'll call this meeting to order.
Oh, yes, oh, yes, this county commission meeting of Sumner County is now open pursuant to adjournment. God bless this country and this honorable commission. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Weatherford. Our invocation tonight will be from Reverend James Johnson, the lead pastor at Gallatin First United Methodist Church. He has a bachelor's degree, our bachelor's of science degree in business administration from Tennessee Tech and a master's of divinity from Memphis Theological Seminary. Pastor Johnson served several United Methodist churches before moving to Gallatin. He's a member of the Order of St. Luke, an ordained elder in the United Methodist churches, and a full member of the Tennessee Annual Conference and an Aldersgate Renewal Ministries family partner. He and his wife, Carol, have two children, Grace and Max. Thank you, Brother Johnson.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Langford, county commissioners, public servants, and fellow citizens. Let us pray. Gracious and loving God, we give you thanks for Sumner County, for the work of our community to build a stronger America. Would we pray for wisdom tonight in all the decisions of the county commission? We pray for your Holy Spirit to bring peace and wisdom. And on this week, when we will return things and feast across our community, Lord, we thank you for first blessing us. May we bless our families. May we bless our neighbors. May we do the right thing for a stronger community. For all of this is yours, O God. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please show me the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Let's check our roll.
Roll called now. Open this commissioner, please record your presence by pressing the green button.
I have 23 members present, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Your regular and consent agenda are before you. I'll wait for a motion to approve our regular and consent agenda. Motion made by Commissioner Sullivan, seconded by Commissioner Graves. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Your minutes are in your packet. I'll wait for a motion. Motion made by Mr. Foster, seconded by Mr. Becker. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. We are going to have our public comments after the report of the chair section and our certificates of recognition. And so we will do that in a minute. Your veteran service report is attached. And I want to share just a couple of brief announcements before we go to our certificates of recognition. First, we're honored to have Senator Farrell Hale with us tonight. Senator, it's an honor to have you with us and just appreciate you taking time to join us. We have a thank you from the Jerome P. Ellis Memorial Scholarship Program. Tim and Linda Ellis wanted us to know that they appreciate and thank us for the memorial donation for the Jerome P. Ellis Memorial Scholarship Fund. It will be awarded to a 2019 graduating senior. The bridal house Christmas open house is scheduled for December 1st, 2018, from 10:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. and everyone is invited to attend. You know, one of the, one of the things is I've moved into a new leadership position at the county. One of the things that I've begun, I started thinking through this when I was a principal, definitely think through it a lot now in my new job, is that sometimes we get so busy with the work at hand that we forget our purpose, our why. It's a really popular book now out, leadership book about focusing on our why. And I wanted to take just a minute. It's November. We have Thanksgiving in a couple days. I won't talk too long because I know a lot of us have travel, basketball games, cooking, things like that. But I wanted to take just a few moments to share some of the good work that I think we've done over the last few years. You know, four years ago, even before that really, we made a commitment to be good stewards of the funds that were entrusted to us. We began a strong capital project program then. We spent about $72 million to complete renovations and additions across the county. And I just want to, you know, I know when I was growing up as a kid in White House, if you were up on the ridge, the one thing you knew is that there was not going to be a whole lot of, once you got outside of Hendersonville and Gallatin, there was not going to be a whole lot of county money that came our way. You had to, you had to scratch and fight to have the opportunity to get that. So I just want to listen, just wanted to read aloud the schools that have received additions or renovations over the last four years. Beach High School, White House High School, Clyde Riggs Elementary, Guild Elementary, Hawkins Middle School, Jack Anderson Elementary, Rucker Stewart Middle, the purchase of property near Cotton Town, Station Camp Middle, Nanny Berry Elementary, Watt Hardeston Elementary, Walton Ferry Elementary, George Whitten Elementary, Jean Brown Elementary, Venus Stewart Elementary, HVAC and electrical upgrades at Madison Creek, Beach Elementary and Ellis Middle School, roofing projects at Gallatin High School, Indian Lake, Howard Elementary, door and window upgrades at H.B. Williams and White House Middle, Westmoreland High School, Schaefer Middle School, Jack Anderson, Benny Beals, all received door and window upgrades. If you go back to the previous commission before that, we were able to put on, able to build Burris Elementary School and add additions to Gallatin and Hendersonville High School. Quite a lot of work that's been done. You know, we came in within, I think, about three million over on projects that were bid four or five years ago. And commercial construction, if you've done any bids or looked at it, the prices for commercial construction have really skyrocketed. So I would like to take just a moment. I know we have a few school board members here and Dr. Phillips. I'd like to commend them for the work that they've done and commend the commission for the work that's been done over the last four years. I also wanted to take a moment, you know, while we have a large number, a large contingent of our Sumner County students here tonight with students from Merrill Hyde Magnet School, from Portland High School. Beach will be here next month. We will honor state championship beach buccaneer girl soccer team next month. And hopefully, if things go well, this Friday night, we might have Beach High School playing for another state championship in football. We're pulling for, even Mr. Becker's pulling for Beach High School. He did it in soccer. We think he may do it in football. We'll see. We're not sure about football, but we know he did in soccer. But I wanted to share just some of the accomplishments of our young people.
Yeah.
Hmm? You're not Michelle pulling for Beach?
I'm not cheering for UT this weekend.
Oh, okay, okay.
There's nothing I can do about that, Mr. Gue. Our kids have, our kids last year had a 21.4 ACT, the highest in the county history, 94.7 graduation rate, tied for the highest. I shared this with guidance counselor, high school guidance counselors this afternoon. Our class of 2018 in Sumner County received offers of over $59 million in scholarships, which is pretty remarkable. It shows what talented young people we have. Our kids earned 4,893 college credits worth at prevailing state university rates, about 1.4, a little bit under 1.4 million. As the parent of a freshman in college, any one of those college credits that you can pick up is important when you start paying for it. We had about 130 AP scholars and amazingly, we had a sophomore at Hendersonville High School, first time she took the ACT, she scored a 36, which is perfect. That's pretty impressive. On athletic fields, Station Camp High School boys have won two state championships in soccer. Portland High School has won two volleyball state championships in a row. Beach High School just won the girls' soccer championship. White House High School won girls' soccer last year. White House High School had a 400-meter runner win track and field in the state. Merrill Hyde Magnet School had their cross-country team, middle school cross-country team, win the state. Hunter this past weekend won the state in cheerleading. Hendersonville High School dance team won the state this weekend in dance. And we've had a number, a number of CTE national champions in DECA, cosmetology, auto, other programs. Really just want to take a moment to tip my hat to the incredible, incredible young people and leaders that we have in this county. So in terms of things that I'm thankful for as chairman of the county commission, I'm thankful for the good work that's been done together. You know, hopefully, we've gotten out of the language of old commission, new commission, all that. The reality is, is that we all represent Sumner County together and I'm thankful for the, I'm thankful for the work that we do. We don't always agree 100%. Sometimes we have tough votes. Sometimes we represent our constituencies and we vote in different ways. But at the end of the day, I'm hopeful, you know, Mr. Witt sent me something this week about something to work on as legislative body to look at civility, which is a dying thing in our country at this time. And, you know, for us, even at the local level, to be leaders in civility, I think is a very positive thing. And I look forward to the leadership that Mr. Witt is going to, is going to give us there. You know, as we move forward on our bond resolution tonight, I will share with you, I don't know if you saw the tin of seeing this weekend, but Williamson County submitted their five-year capital request, $543 million, including 383 million for new school construction. Well, I see Ms. Andrews, a couple of other school board members out there. I'd like to commend them for, you know, keeping our school construction costs down and sending us what's needed, not necessarily, you know, Williamson County has one outlandish thing I can't even comprehend, a three-story middle school. I can't even imagine, Mr. Hyde, what a three-story middle school would look like to control and run. You'd need six administrators just to control stairwells. But anyway, I'm glad that we don't, I'm glad that we don't have those issues. I'm going to, I'm going to stop talking now, but I do want to extend to each member of the commission, you know, Mr. Hinton mentioned this last year, and I think it's a good idea for us to do at some point, is to recognize the spouses of our, the family members of our commission members because it's a, it's work and it's sacrifice. And sometimes, you know, we take heat publicly and the ones that feel it the most quite frequently are spouses. So I'd like to extend my thanks to each of you for the service that you give and to your families for the sacrifices that they make for you to be here. So on Thanksgiving Week, I extend my thanks to you and my praise to you. And I'm proud to be a member of this body.
All right, I will now turn over to Senator Farrell Hale and our county executive, Mr. Anthony Holt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the opportunity to be at the assembly here tonight. We have a Senate Joint Resolution Number 744 that we would like to present tonight. And this is to the Tennessee Senior Stars, which is composed of young ladies that play softball, 75 years and older. They play in six states. They participate in tournaments. And I would recommend to the county commission that you not challenge these ladies for a softball tournament. And just, we appreciate them very much. This resolution is signed by the Speaker of the Senate, Randy McNally, Speaker of the House, Beth Harwell, and by the governor of the state of Tennessee, Bill Haslam, and by myself, Farrell Hale. And so congratulate you. We're going to ask you to come up in just a moment. First, I think Anthony has some comments he would like to make.
Senator, you trump me every time. But we do have a certificate of recognition. But before I read that, ladies, you're the ones we're honoring. So I'm requesting you to come up. I'm not telling you to come up. I'm requesting you to come up. So please take the time to come up because we want to see you.
I'm the oldest.
Well, that's, that's the leader. So you get, you get up here next to me. And come on around, ladies. You've got to make the senator feel wanted too now, you know. Got to spread the love. Well, I have a certificate of recognition and they're going to vote on this tonight because the senator's already voted on his. So what we have is a resolution honoring the Tennessee Senior Stars Women's Softball Team, whereas the Sumner, whereas Tennessee Senior Stars Women's Softball Team is composed of senior citizens who are 75 years and younger, based out of Sumner County and Wilson Counties. And whereas these remarkable ladies serve as role models to countless citizens and show others what a passion to maintain one's health is and well-being and does not have to fade as one gets older. And they are living proof of the benefits of an active lifestyle. Whereas a traveling team, the Tennessee Senior Stars has participated in six tournaments in 2018 and visited the states of Georgia, Florida, Indiana, South Carolina for competition. And the local tournament, the Twitty, was performed at Drake's Creek Park in Hendersonville in May. And whereas this team is an inspiration to all and should be commended for their remarkable feats. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissions Meeting on regular session this 19th day of November 2018, that this body honors the Tennessee Senior Stars Women's Softball Team members for their dedication and passion to stay active and healthy and being role models for positive living and wishes them the best in the future. And be it further resolved, this resolution to be spread on the minutes of this body and the clerk is to furnish a copy of this resolution to the Tennessee Senior Stars Women's lovely softball team.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Graves and a second by Mr. Gomenden. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously.
Of course, you know, they always put the coach up here. First of all, I would just like to say that it is remarkable, if you had ever come out to a senior women's softball tournament, most of these ladies are, let's say, they're over, definitely over 75. I won't say how old because I'll be, I might get in trouble a little bit. But this year, we participated in six tournaments. And you're going to say, well, who do you play? Well, we play teams that are from Florida, Virginia. There is one team that is from Ohio, Tri-Stars, and that's our nemesis. We were in, six tournaments this year. We were in the finals in five of them. We ended up in October as the national champs in Myrtle Beach. And they defeated the Tri-Stars. So that was a very special tournament. They will begin working out again in January. And as being their coach, it is an honor because they never miss practice. They, it takes them a while to get ready to practice, all the, all the equipment that they have to put on. But they are very dedicated and it would be truly an honor for me to coach them. It is. But if you could come out and watch them, you would be inspired to go out and participate and stay active as long as these ladies have. And they, most of these ladies have been together for over 20 years playing this game that they truly love. And they're all best friends. And that is, I think, probably the most wonderful thing about them is that they're best friends. Thank the, thank everyone here for this wonderful honor for these ladies to be recognized because they are a very special group of women. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Do you want Mr. Hinton? Do you want Mr. Hinton?
Yeah.
Mr. Hinton.
We think Mr. Hinton may know some people on this next recognition. We're going to, we're going to yield the floor to Mr. Gomenden.
We have a resolution honoring the Portland High School Lady Panthers volleyball team for state championship, I think, two years in a row. And we would like for y'all to come up too. The resolution says, whereas in October, the Portland High School Lady Panthers volleyball team won their second consecutive state championship by defeating Knoxville Catholic School in three sets at state volleyball tournament. And whereas having be, having prepared diligently and under the leadership of Coach Rob Leesman and assistant coaches Ginger Leesman and Jesse Perdue, the Lady Panthers entered the finals for their last challenge of the season with an impressive record of 44 wins and seven losses and became the only team in school history to win two state championships back-to-back. And whereas players, Mailey Douglas, Madison Linville, Tania Brown, Presley Cowan, Josie Runyon, Sydney Lawless, Jordy Latimer, Cameron Whitaker, Emily Rogers, Savannah Pippin, Kylie Hibden, Ashton Hoffman, Marlena Bullington, Grace Tucker, Lauren Walden, Haley Chambers, Keir Gregory, Rayleigh Hester, Emily Newland, Katie Crutchfield, and Anna McLaughlin have truly shown their diligence and commitment to their sport. Hope I didn't butcher the names too bad. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners Meeting in regular session on this, the 19th day of November 2018, that this body does hereby congratulate and commend the Portland High School Lady Panthers volleyball team for their outstanding performance and wishes them continued success in their future endeavors. And I so move.
Second, a motion made by Mr. Gomenden, seconded by Mr. Hinton. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously.
Would any of you like to say?
Before you go on, I think also that Ms. Burlington, Marlena Burlington, where are you, Marlena?
Burlington.
Burlington, Burlington, I'm sorry.
Would you like?
Just signed, just signed a scholarship with Missouri State. So congratulations.
Thank you very much for everyone's support. It means a lot to all of us.
I hope Mr. Gomenden appreciates us giving him the one with all the names on it.
How you done, boy?
This certificate of recognition is for the leadership of Portland High School, Coach Kavanaugh and the, and we'd ask him to come up and he's got a couple of gentlemen with him and the athletic director, Ms. Leesman, and Mr. David Woods, I understand, is not here. But that's all right. We'll go on without him.
Have Mr. Driver.
Mr. Driver. He cheers him on with music, don't he? A resolution honoring Portland High School for winning the 2018 Sportsmanship Award. Whereas recently, the Middle Tennessee Football Officials Association awarded Portland High School with the 2018 Sportsmanship Award, a prestigious honor which reflects outstanding character and great sportsmanship of the administrators, coaches, and the student athletes. And whereas Portland High School principal, Mr. David Woods, athletic director, Ms. Ginger Leesman, and head football coach, Mr. Greg Kavanaugh strive to instill honesty, respect, and responsibility, not only in their players, but all of their students. And whereas Portland High School football players and coaches exemplify the spirit of the game by displaying exceptional teamwork, positive attitude, and respectful treatment of fellow competitors, teammates, and officials on and off the field. And whereas this award is carefully selected, recognition given to one school, which displays the highest level of sportsmanship and hospitality toward not only the school's athletes and officials, but also the opposing players, coaches, and supporters, the Portland High School should be congratulated for receiving this well-deserved commendation. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners Meeting in regular session on this, the 19th day of November 2018, that this body does honor Portland High School, its staff, and students for receiving the 2018 Sportsmanship Award and congratulates all student athletes, Mr. David Woods, Ms. Ginger Leesman, and Mr. Greg Kavanaugh for their unwavering, unwavering dedication to excellence both on the field and off. And be it further resolved that this resolution is to be spread on the minutes of this body and the clerk is to furnish a copy of this resolution to Portland High School. And I so move.
Motion made by Mr. Hinton, seconded by Mr. Gomenden. All in favor say aye. Opposed. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you for this honor. Not only does it take one man to coach a football team, it takes the community. And, and, you know, our officials like to eat quite a bit. And as you can tell, we cook pretty good up in Portland, looking at us three that are part of the football team. I brought with me Kobe Dutcher and also Isaiah Mason. And these two young men, according to their leadership and the way they play the game, were voted our captains this year. And I think I could not ask for any better two individuals to represent our team with their behavior and with their play than these two men. Thank you very much for the honor and the recognition.
We have one more for honoring the coach of the, the head coach of the girls' volleyball team, Mr. Robert Leesman. We'd like for you to come up here. We know that the girls are very, very talented and work very hard, but it takes a really good coach to... good coach to be the leader. But whereas Mr. Robert Leesman, the head coach of girls volleyball at Portland High School has selfishly, selflessly, excuse me, given his time to teach, motivate, and aid his young athletes and as a result of his outstanding work, has named, was named the Coach of the Year in June 2018, an honor that truly reflects his dedication and leadership. And whereas owing to the principles of dedication, hard work, and commitment instilled in his players by Coach Leesman and his assistant coaches, Ginger Leesman and Jesse Perdue, Lady Panthers won the state championship in two consecutive years, 2017, 2018, a first in Portland High School history. And whereas Coach Leesman grew up in Gallatin, graduated from Gallatin High School, started a volleyball youth league in Portland, Tennessee in 2005, and the first middle school program in Sumner County at Portland Middle School in 2006. And has an impressive record which stands at 185 wins and 50 losses over the past five years. And whereas Coach Leesman has positively impacted the lives of countless students and through his efforts and dedication, has not only been an outstanding coach, but also a leader, mentor, guardian, and a friend to all his young athletes. And because of his diligence and commitment, Portland High School Lady Panthers have become a great success with a bright future. Now therefore be it resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners meeting in regular session on this, the 19th day of November 2018, that this body commends Coach Rob Leesman for being recognized as the Coach of the Year and expresses its appreciation for his exceptional service. And be it therefore resolved that this resolution is to be spread on the minutes of this body and the clerk is to furnish a copy of this resolution to Coach Rob Leesman and I so move.
Motion made by Mr. Commenden, seconded by Mr. Hinton. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. This one, I didn't know we were getting this one tonight. None of this I've done on my own. My wife started the program, restarted the program 30 years ago. And she and I have done this from the very start. The program, the girls would tell you that Coach Rob does, is the boss on the court and Ms. Leesman is the boss off the court. And there's not a truer statement. I'm very honored to get this. I tell the girls, I'm a non-faculty coach, I work at Nissan, and every day I come in to practice with them, it's a bright spot in my day. I love doing it, love doing it with my wife, love Portland High School. Thank you.
I think Mr. Hyde is coming and Ms. Echols.
We have the honor of three recognitions for Merrill Hyde tonight. And we divided these up, but Ms. Kruger is not going to speak. She has a voice problem tonight, so Commissioner Echols, who is a parent at Merrill Hyde, will be reading two of them and I will read one. I would like at this time for the cross-country team or those members that are present to come forward with the coaches, please. Some of you may remember that we recognized the senior cross-country team last year, the senior high team. And the reason they're so good is that these guys in middle school are doing a great job in feeding the high school program. We were very pleased this year to attain at the level of a state championship, the first state championship, athletic championship at Merrill Hyde Magnet School with these young men. So they have made history and we're very, very proud of them and their coaches. Whereas the Merrill Hyde Middle School Boys Cross Country Team had a banner season in 2018, competed in several events successfully, and captured their first state championship in September 22nd at the Mid-State Sectional Race for Single-A Schools at Riverdale High School with a score of 86 points. And whereas under the leadership of coaches Wes Reed and Lenore Poschkovich, the boys' team members, and here we go guys, if I mispronounce, pardon, Parker Brightling, Ronan Clary, Sam Morgan, Colt Shook, and Grant Parsons, Eric Papa, Maddox Freiburn, and Porsche Bryant, displayed great team spirit, worked hard, and were dedicated to their winning objectives, which resulted in their victorious season. And whereas the championship brings the first state cross-country championship home to Merrill Hyde Magnet School, and this team should be doubly proud of this first-time feat. And whereas these young men, athletes demonstrated strict discipline, determination, and strive to do their best, and their coaches, Mr. Reed and Ms. Poschkovich deserve special recognition for their leadership, mentorship, and reinforcement of strong teamwork. Now therefore be it resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners meeting in regular session on this, the 19th day of November 2018, that this body hereby congratulates and commends the Merrill Hyde Magnet School Boys Middle School Cross Country Team and wishes them much success in their future endeavors. And be it further resolved that this resolution is to be spread on the minutes of this body and a copy of the resolution is to be provided to the Merrill Hyde Magnet School Boys Middle School Cross Country Team. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Motion made by Mr. Hyde, seconded by Ms. Kruger. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Alright, thank you very much. Coach, you want to say something?
One quick word. What I'd like to say is to the volleyball team, congratulations, that is awesome. To the soccer team, that is awesome. To next month, their soccer team, that is awesome. But our sport is your sport's punishment.
Thank you. Thank you guys, appreciate it. I would like for the principal of Merrill Hyde Magnet School to come forward and I apologize, I didn't invite him up with these guys. Mr. Frank, would you please come forward? This man probably deserves a great deal of recognition and honor for the leadership of Merrill Hyde. He really does. We were talking about this just before the meeting. He does a tremendous job as principal of the Magnet School and we all appreciate him very, very much. Okay, who has the...
You just get to stay up here, I suppose. Alright, I would like to ask the Merrill Hyde Magnet School Lady Hawks Soccer Team to While they are assembling, I will admit that I requested to read this recognition because as a Merrill Hyde parent, I'm very proud, but also their assistant coach is a very old friend of mine, so I'm really proud of the work that y'all have done. Feel like I got to follow your journey along. It's really exciting. I have a certificate of recognition, a resolution honoring Merrill Hyde Magnet School Girls Soccer Team. Whereas Merrill Hyde Magnet School Lady Hawks Soccer Team had a tremendously successful year and finished the season as a 2018 TSSAA State Finalist with a 17-3 record, the most wins in program history. And whereas this was the Lady Hawks' second TSSAA State Championship Tournament and their first state finals championship game, where the team gave up only one goal against all Class A opponents all season and to the eventual state champions in the 74th minute of the state championship game. And whereas, under the leadership of head coach Jason Bentley, assistant coaches Megan Rea and Mikey Oaks, and student manager Olivia Johnson, players Gabrielle Steiner, Michaela Farmer, Tessa Bentley, Gracie Gumm, Mary McIlwain, Elizabeth Parsons, Gabby Wakefield, Mia Maxwell, Julia Lewis, Abby Miller, Abigail Oaks, Claire Flat, Lizzie Wilder, Josephine Hosann, Sidney Rea, Taylor Jordan, Karina Steiner, Kaitlyn Coster, McKenna Brown, Haley Hyatt, Victoria Hopper, Katie Hull, Abby Marshall, Michaela Rea, and Megan White, practiced tirelessly, displayed great perseverance and dedication, and showed unwavering commitment to excellence both on and off the field. Now therefore be it resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners meeting in regular session on this, the 19th day of November 2018, that this body does hereby congratulate and commend the Merrill Hyde Magnet School Girls Soccer Team and its coaches, Jason Bentley, Megan Rea, and Mikey Oaks, for their achievements and wishes them much success in the future. And be it further resolved that this resolution is to be spread on the minutes of this body and the clerk is to furnish a copy of this resolution to the Merrill Hyde Magnet School Girls Soccer Team and its coaching staff and I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Echols, seconded by Ms. Kruger. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
As senior captain and on behalf of all of us, I'd just like to thank the commission for this recognition. It's a huge honor to be here and we appreciate your continued support. Here's to a great season, Lady Hawks.
I will say as they, as they walk off, it's special for me. Coach Bentley and I were talking before, you know, my, my daughter's the same age as the sophomores and we all grew up on Tennessee United Fields together and it's, it's been special to watch them, watch them grow up. In fact, we were, I was telling Mr. Frank the other day that I remember we used to do parent games when they were like eight and nine and then they got too good for us to play. So I remember especially Abby kicked me in the shin one night, I was playing goalie and you could tell for then that she was going to be relentless when she played soccer and it's just, it's been a joy to, to watch them grow up. So congratulations, girls, we're so proud of you and look forward to, to next year and see what you do. Congratulations.
Mr. Frank, are you gonna have anybody join you or you get this one all by yourself? Okay. I have here a big deal certificate of recognition. It's a resolution honoring Merrill Hyde Magnet School for being recognized as a 2018 Blue Ribbon School. Whereas Merrill Hyde Magnet School is one of only six schools in the state of Tennessee to be recognized by U.S. Secretary of Education Betsy DeVos as a national Blue Ribbon School for 2018. An award which honors public and private K-12 schools that are either academically superior in their state or that demonstrate dramatic gains in student achievement. And whereas Merrill Hyde Magnet School received this prestigious award in the exemplary high-performing schools category, a recognition bestowed on schools that rank in the top 15% in their state and have the highest graduation rate with students who demonstrate academic excellence and the top 15% in English and mathematics. And whereas the National Blue Ribbon Program inspires students to master challenging and engaging ideas, re-energizes staff and parents, and the schools that receive this award serve as examples for other schools to prepare students for successful careers and meaningful lives. And whereas Merrill Hyde Magnet School should be applauded for its commitment to educational excellence and hard work of educators and families who are dedicated to high standards of academic success with no significance to student background and income levels. Now therefore be it resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners meeting in regular session on this, the 19th day of November 2018, that this body hereby honors and celebrates Merrill Hyde Magnet School for being named a 2018 Blue Ribbon School and commends its dedicated past and present administrators, teachers, and staff who strive to teach, encourage, and inspire each student, thus making Merrill Hyde Magnet School the outstanding school it is today. And be it further resolved that this resolution is to be spread on the minutes of this body and the clerk is to furnish a copy of this resolution to Principal Darren Frank and I so move.
Motion made by Ms. Echols, seconded by Mr. Hyde. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
On behalf of the students and faculty and really the community that makes up Merrill Hyde, thank you for your commitment to education and for setting aside time tonight to recognize our school. You know, as, as Portland and the girls soccer team and the boys cross-country team will tell you that recognition of something like this doesn't start when the season starts, it starts months and even years before. And with this award, really many of the, if we were to list all the names that were called out on the teams that were play, that played and we would be in the, the hundreds of names because it's the classes of 2016, 17, and 18 that really called this data to, to make us, or allow us to receive this award. So lots of credit goes to those, those folks and those teachers. We work hard every day at Merrill Hyde and we know that everybody else does too, but very proud of the work that we do. And thank you so much for your time tonight and for the work that you do to support us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frank. Since, since we mentioned ACT scores earlier, Merrill Hyde has the highest average ACT score in the county. I think it's 30.2 or maybe a little bit, even a little higher, but... Not, not that, Mr. Frank, is it 30.5?
30.7.
30.7.
30.7.
Yeah, 30.7. Just to put that in perspective, you know, one, that would get you into any school in the state of Tennessee and gets you hundreds of thousands of dollars of scholarship money. So we're, we're very excited for the work that they're doing at Merrill Hyde Magnet. And thank you, Mr. Frank, for your leadership. Alright, everyone is more than welcome to stay for all of the commission business, but you're also free if you would like to leave at this moment. I know it's the week of Thanksgiving. Coach Bentley's saying, come on. Alright, do we have anyone else that wishes to sign up for public comments?
Anyone else wish to sign up for public comments?
On an agenda item. Alright, we'll wait until the doors close so we can hear. Alright, Mr. Kevin Bagert from 424 AB Wade Road, Portland, Tennessee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kevin Bagert, 424 AB Wade Road, Portland, Tennessee. I'm not quite sure why I get up here and, and address this body for the last four years now, going on five. And I'm not sure why I care, but, but let me tell you the two reasons why I'm up here addressing it. First of all, so I go on the record that there are people out there that oppose something on this agenda. so." As we listen to all the accolades about Sumner County, certainly we have a lot to be proud of. And a lot of the people that we hear talk about the things that we are proud of are 10, 20, 30-year removed from the Sumner County education system, but they're living proof that we've had a great system here for 10, 20, 30 years. And that's not to take away from where our school system is going, but the thing that I do think is somewhat irresponsible is the path that the previous commission started us on and this commission is gonna continue to take us down. President Obama doubled our national debt. I won't get into the numbers because I'm sure you'll refute that, but this body tonight is going to double and start us down the road of tripling our debt. And the one thing that we didn't hear and why I say it's irresponsible is all of those kids that we allowed to walk out of here, they don't know what they're gonna be signed up to pay for in coming years. The added tax burden, all the regulations and things that go along with that. But I just wanted to go on the record and you'll be hearing from me in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bagert. Mr. Jimmy Johnston, 1598 Greenlee Boulevard.
Chairman Langford and Commissioners, I am Jimmy Johnston of the Ford Sumner Economic Partnership, which is located at the American Job Center in Gallatin at 1598 Greenlee Boulevard. I stand here tonight to support the bond issuance of a new school plan. Economic development and economic growth requires capital investment, land, accessibility, roads, utilities, workforce, and quality of life. And quality of life starts with our public education in our schools. We are blessed in Sumner County with a very strong school system, from the teachers and students to the physical infrastructure to teach and train 30,000 students. Companies and their employees choose Sumner County based on our school system. Our general population growth is about 2% annual rate or close to 4,000 net population gain. Since the Great Recession, we are averaging a healthy 2,000 new jobs a year. Sumner County is an integral part of the fastest-growing economy in the state. We are at full employment and our future workforce is the students. Governor Haslam has done a great job to connect the alignment of our education system to a career or job pathway. Tennessee Promise, Tennessee Reconnect, the drive to 55. Governor-elect Lee will emphasize career and technical and agriculture education. We have a great education ecosystem in Sumner County, from Volunteer State Community College, the College of Applied Technology in Portland, or TCAP Portland, Union University in Hendersonville, and Welsh College in Gallatin. But it all starts with our K-12 public education system. I applaud the county executive or county mayor and this commission and previous commissions working with the school board to plan for the future. Again, economic growth requires land, accessibility, infrastructure, a workforce, and of course, capital investment. In this case, the capital investment is the public's tax revenues, of which you have been selected to be the guardian and to be used for the highest and best purpose. Your leadership keeps Sumner County as the best choice to live, work, and learn. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Johnston. You have your consent agenda before you. I'll wait for a motion to approve our consent agenda. Motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Baker Ring. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me back up. We had a... Mr. Taylor. Commissioner Mo Taylor.
I believe I missed the opportunity to pull a couple items off the consent agenda. Is that correct?
Yeah, the agenda was approved.
Okay. Shall we vote no?
Okay, okay. Anyone else wish to vote no? Roll call. Okay. Let's see, we did the yays before Commissioner Taylor spoke, so any nos? Okay. Commissioner Mo Taylor? All right. Your written reports are on your desk. Do we have a motion to approve our notaries? Motion made by Commissioner Echols, seconded by Commissioner Rhodes. Let's vote.
Notary applications on the board. Each commissioner please report your vote. 23 votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote? All 24 votes are entered. It is unanimous, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Committee on Committees, Mr. Goode.
Yeah, I lost my mouse. No, you're good. Press your button, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm coming. My mouse got lost.
You may get him.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Committee on Committees met its regular scheduled time tonight at 6:30. We have a couple things that were on the agenda that were all unanimous approved. For the record, I'll mention their names. Industrial Board's six-year appointment reappointments for the county executives, Jim Hodges, Wayne Riding. It was unanimous, I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Goode, seconded by Commissioner Rhodes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board of Construction Appeals, reapportments from the county executive, two-year term, Don Cowden, Bob Goodall Jr., Robert Hill, Rick Holcomb, alternative Larry Brown, one year, alternative Scott, Sean Utley, one year. It was unanimous, I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Goode, seconded by Commissioner Baker Ring. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Civil Service Board, two-year appointment, Bill Johnson, county executive reapportment. It was unanimous, I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Goode, seconded by Commissioner Echols. See no discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Goode.
Airport, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Airport Regional was a reapportment from the county executive, Colonel Richard Crawford. That was Crawford, that was unanimous, I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Goode, seconded by Commissioner Sullivan. See no discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Education, Mr. Goode.
Let me digress back into Committee on Committees.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, doing an announcement from the county executive. We'll have E-911 next month. There will be one vacancy for a county commission. The county executive has asked that if any sitting commissioner would like to be on the E-91 committee and has interest in that, please see him. That's it for that one, Mr. Chairman, and education, no report.
Okay. Highway, Mr. Graves.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a report on highways except they're winding down. I just want to pray, say thank you to the highway department, to employees and road superintendent for the work they've done this year. But also, I'm gonna put my plug in for the Bethpage Christmas parade at this point in time. December the 22nd, lineup time's about 11 and takeoff time's about 1:00. I lost my crowd in that, but anyway.
You gotta strike while the iron's hot, Mr. Graves.
Right.
General Ox, Ms. Sheff.
No report, sir.
Okay. Emergency Services, Ms. Kruger.
No report.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm halfway. I got you. Legislative Committee, Mr. Ring.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. First on the agenda is 181101, approving the Count Courthouse Project Manager Agreement, and I so move.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Ring, seconded by Commissioner Shale. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Ring.
Thank you. Next, we have 181102, encouraging the restoration of Randy's Record Shop as a historic site, and I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Ring, seconded by Commissioner Echols. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
181103, rescinding and repealing Private Acts of 2004, Chapter 137, designating the county mayor in Sumner County as county executive. I so move.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Ring, seconded by Commissioner Kruger. Commissioner Mo Taylor, you're in the queue.
I've been asked a few questions about this and I don't have the answer, so this is where I get the answer.
Okay.
Three questions. What's the purpose of this? What's it gonna cost us? And kind of a question and comment, won't that make you have to change your names on your campaign signs?
Mr. Chairman, can we have... I haven't thought about the third one, Mr. Taylor. Can we have Mr. Holt address those issues?
Yes.
Mr. Holt.
Thank you, Chairman. See, first question. What will this do? This will basically rescind, the private act was passed that pretty much segregated us off from the rest of the counties. I'm about the last holdout in state Tennessee that's now referred to as county executive. Everyone else is known as county mayor, so it's almost gotten to the point, people want to know, "What am I the executor of?" And they don't understand clearly what the job is. It would be something similar to the county commission being referred to in today's present terms as county squires, as once you were referred to. So, this pretty much just gets me on the same title as every other mayor out of other 95 counties and states in Tennessee. What will it cost? Don't think it'll cost anything. It goes to the state house and senate and I've already got sponsors for it. It's just adding it to the legislative agenda. Well, I changed my signage. When I run again in 2022, yes, I will, and I'll have Anthony Holt reelect for county mayor. So, I hope that explains all your questions.
All right. Any more, any other discussion? All right, let's vote. We actually need to vote on the board on this one. Yes, sir.
The resolution is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. All 24 votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote? With 21 affirmative votes, resolution does receive the two-thirds vote.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp. All right, Mr. Ring. 1811-04.
1811-04, changing the official name of Sumner County Regional Airport to the Nashville Executive Airport at Sumner County, and I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Ring, seconded by Commissioner Goode. Any discussion? Let's vote.
Resolution is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. 23 votes are entered. All 24 votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote? That is unanimous, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp.
And that is all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ring. Mr. Becker, Financial Management. Okay, thank you, Mr. Becker. Mr. Chris Taylor, Budget.
Here we go, Mr. Kemp. Struggle each month. Resolution 1811-05, accepting an architectural contract for the new elementary school. I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Gene Rhodes. See no discussion? Let's vote.
Resolution is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. All 24 votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote? Resolution is approved.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kemp.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Mr. Taylor.
Resolution 1811-06, accepting an architectural contract for a new high school. I so move.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Jerry Foster. See no discussion? Let's vote. Oh, wait, hang on, hang on. Mr. Graves, did you want to talk?
I did have a question. Where will this money come from, Mr. Chairman, for the architectural fees?
Mr. Taylor.
Mr. Graves, we've already set aside some money for that and remember that we also had money, that was about $10 million this last year that we had to pull from the bonds because we were about to get penalized for it, and so we've been using some of that for different things. And then if Mr. Long wants to correct anything, I might be wrong on.
These are from the bond. The...
Okay. Then we also, Mr. Graves, we also had some money we've been spending for infrastructure and stuff like that, so I don't want to say we haven't been spending money on it because we have. Yes, sir.
Okay. See no one else in the queue? Let's vote.
Resolution is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. 23 votes are entered. Anyone not voting, wishing to vote? Anyone wishing to change your vote? Resolution is approved with 20 affirmative votes.
Okay. Mr. Taylor.
Resolution 1811-07, this is the initial resolution authorizing the issuance of not-to-exceed $3 million general obligation public improvement bonds. I so move.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Leslie Shale. Commissioner Mo Taylor.
Have quite a few questions, Mr. Chairman. I've been asked a lot of these from the constituents all over the county and I attended the meetings, the joint meetings that we had the night before the election. One of the, to follow on the procedure side of things, one of the questions that I was asked that I would like to ask tonight is, was the, I don't recall, it may have been, but was the rule suspended to allow this to go only before one reading?
With budget, sir? Commissioner Taylor, you're talking about on Budget Committee?
Yeah.
Okay, yes, sir. If, the actual rule is that if we have a unanimous vote for it, it can't, with an amendment to it, be suspended to just one reading instead of two.
Okay. That's question number one. Back when, in 2014, when we selected this property, I posed a lot of questions to it. One of those questions being the zoning of the property. When and at what meeting did this property go through rezoning?
Go ahead, Ms. Taylor.
The property hasn't been rezoned, but it can be authorized for a school through the present zoning. There'll be some things that will have to be done. It'll go through our planning commission.
So, it doesn't follow the 2035 growth plan for that area?
I don't know if it follows that or not. I don't know if that's part of that area.
That's something that I want to raise question to and not because, I'm not against the schools, I'm not against anybody, it's not personal, but we gotta let our people know what we're doing. I rode out there by that property today and if you were here four years ago, you know, that's not my selection for a school. That's not my place that I would select for a school. I'm one of 24 votes, but you think about living out there. You think about living out there right now. Say you just moved in, the property right next to this property on Hunter's Lane is for sale right now. So, I wonder if Mr. Real Estate Agent is gonna disclose to whoever's gonna buy that property that there's a school fixing to come in right next door to you. Nothing, not being negative towards the school, not being negative, but the duty to let our citizens know what's going on out in our county, anywhere when we do something like this. I hope you can see where I'm coming from, because if you were living out in that area not knowing what it's gonna cause, the increased traffic, the, you know, the decreased darkness. I mean, when you're decreased darkness, what I mean by that is, there'll be more street lights, more city lights. I mean, this is a rule setting out in the community. The roads, we just spent over half a million dollars on asphalt paving Upper Station Camp Creek Road. Based on the elevation of the entrance off that side of that property, I mean, we're gonna have to tear that road up, put in turning lanes, put in traffic signals more than likely, probably on two ends of the road. Not sure. If you've ever tried to get out on the Cotton Town end, good luck. Even worse up on Latimer Lane. So, I'm not speaking against it, I'm just letting people know what we're facing and what we're gonna face. Also, another question I have that was posed by citizens, and this is the place that they can go, watch this recording, hopefully get an answer to their question. I had a county commissioner, a past county commissioner from, not the previous commission but the one before that, said he was approached about some of his property for a greenway to connect this. said he was approached about some of his property for a greenway to connect this, this school to the other schools. That, you know, there's citizens out there that own property that would kinda like to know, and I know they'll know, but if there's a plan laid out somewhere out there, that where these greenways extensions are gonna go. I mean, we, you know, there's citizens out there that would really like to know the answer to these questions ahead of time. Give them time to sell if they don't want a greenway in their backyard. So is there anybody here tonight having an answer for that?
Mr. Taylor, I think the greenways, if you're talking about the Station Camp one, isn't that Hendersonville's? I mean, who, which greenway are you talking about?
There was talk about an extension from the Station Camp one there, next to the market.
Sir, I'm not familiar with anything like that.
Okay.
So.
Thank you. We talk about plans. We've been talking about plans for a long time, ever since I've been here. There was plans in place that were going on here before I was ever elected. I didn't agree with them, that's why I put my name on the ballot. There's plans here that I don't agree with. I don't expect you to, everybody to go along with me. But, you know, the plans where we keep increasing our debt, if you think about this, in less than four years, in less than four years, we will have encumbered a hundred and seventy-five billion dollars in debt. In, in less than four years. There are citizens that eat me up one side and down the other over that. I mean, going out there, you know, I, I, I get a lot of feedback, 'cause I ask for feedback, I want feedback. You know, some of those plans in the past, in two thousand and fourteen, we were told that when we did the tax increases, and we, going through the bond issuance, in the presentation that was done in January of two thousand and fifteen, there was a slide that, that said that we would have, with this tax increase, school resource officers in every school. It's two thousand and eighteen. We had special call meetings this year to discuss school resource officers in every school, and we don't have them yet. So the plans didn't always go as they're laid out to go, but we have a plan. You know, there's been a lot, lot, we've got consecutive plans all going on at the same time. We've got a courthouse plan, we've got a school plan, and then we have another school plan in a few years. How are we gonna meet the maintenance of effort on all these plans? We struggle every year when we come to budget time. When we come to, to the budget process every year, I attend meeting after meeting, after meeting, and we struggle. We get growth money in, we allocate it out. We built our reserves, we have to build our reserves when we increase our revenue. State law requires it. I understand that. We, you know, one thing, I, I don't think we have a very good plan of, I don't think we have a very good growth plan. We spent a hundred and eighty-something thousand dollars on a long hollow corridor plan. Where is that at? A hundred and eighty thousand dollars. We spend all this money on plans. Well, the long hollow corridor plan impacts this area dramatically, but we, we, we're not doing anything with it. Don't think we've had a meeting on that in close to two years, but that's a hundred and eighty thousand dollars we spent. We, you know, we, we're growing. I hear people say, if we're not growing, we're dying. Well, I, I don't agree with that. We've gotta control this growth. We need more responsible growth. We're, we're put in a situation, we're put between a rock and a hard spot. I went to the meeting, I went to the school board meeting. Over nine thousand, almost nine thousand permits approved, I think, isn't that correct, Mr. Chairman?
Close, about eight, eighty-four hundred, eight, eight hundred, somewhere in there.
We just put that over nine thousand at the Hendersonville meeting that went on the same night. Six hundred something units was approved that night, and we encouraged them to go ahead and do it because we've got a plan to fund for it. So now, think about that, nine thousand more, more homes, nine thousand more units. This plan ain't gonna last fifteen years. I mean, it's not. I'd be lucky, we'd be lucky if it lasts five years. Nine thousand more homes. We've got to do something. When we first came into the two thousand and fourteen term, or, or there a little bit after, I listened and looked at other counties. I go, you know, through all, all the middle Tennessee counties in the month, and construction, I'm in construction business. So I see, you know, the growth. I see the good growth, and I see the bad growth. We got some bad growth in this county. We were on the news not too long ago for one of our developments down off of Long Hollow Pike. We're gonna be on the news more on situations like that. We've got to get a control of this growth. I mean, we, we can't keep paying, we can't keep asking the farmers, the ones that, that, you know, that's not impacting us, to keep, keep footing the bill for our uncontrolled and unbridled growth. Robinson County was charging a hundred dollars a square foot for impact fees, however that's calculated, but I read an article where they wanted to reduce theirs because Sumner County was only charging seventy. And I'm the last person you'll ever see stand here and talk about fee increases or increase, you know, burden on our citizens. But we've got a lot of people burdening us, overdeveloping our county. We're not, we're not the rural county that we used to be, the ones that a lot of people moved here that strive to be. My teacher told me, when I was riding down thirty-one, going to a competition when I was in high school, that the point from where Kroger is in Gallatin to where, let's say Hendersonville. Back then, that was sprawling farmland. What is it now? Sprawling development. We're losing our rural luster. You know, thi- this plan of just continuing the debt and the taxes on our citizens is not my plan. It's not my plan. And I know y'all are getting tired of listening to me, so I'll sit down, but it, you know, we, I would please ask that we do something to charge a higher fee in these highly impacted areas that are affecting our schools in the Station Camp Beach area. Can we impose higher impact fees per zones in the county? Why not? But that can be changed by state legislation, right? Okay. We, I mean, we've gotta start doing something, and, or we'll be, we'll surpass Williamson County on the debt they wanna try to issue. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Mr. Tinsley.
Um, I'm not gonna sit here and talk for forever, but, um, there was a couple of things that most of, that I wanted to, um, make a comment on. Um, the first is the, if you're not growing, you're dying factor, and, um, my family comes from a small county, which is about the same size, was about the same size as Sumner, population-wise, about thirty years ago in West Virginia, right outside of Charleston, Boone County. Um, at the time, Boone County was growing very rapidly due to their proximity to the state capitol. They, um, they tried raising, um, impact fees, they tried raising taxes, and the county eventually dried up, and, um, the population of Boone County is a third or a fourth now about of what it was thirty years ago. So I think we also need to be really careful about saying, like, we need to stop our growth, because when you stop growing, I mean, for all intents and purposes, you are dying, and I think we need to be, um, looking forward, especially with the additive of Amazon to downtown, because those jobs that they are bringing in, those people are going to live somewhere, and they're not gonna live in their office building, and they're gonna come to Sumner, and they're gonna come to Williamson, and I would preferably like to see more of them come here than to Williamson County, um, just to spend their tax dollars here instead of other places. So I just, um, not that I'm one hundred percent for just raising taxes and everything, but I think, I think we need to really reconsider saying that we're gonna just stop growth in general.
Thank you, Mr. Tinsley. Mr. Hinton.
Uh, no horrendous resolution that I read that, that mentioned schools. It, it would make me feel a little bit better if we was area-specific.
Yes, sir, th- this is, uh, do you wanna take it, Mr. Taylor? Can you explain?
That one's actually about two, three down for the schools. This is general purpose for the county stuff?
We, Mr. Hinton, we, we have to break it. The state, and Ms. Denham, can you correct me if I'm wrong? The state has changed the, the wording of the law on how we do bond resolutions, and so used to where we would roll things into a school bond, like roads, things like that, like getting to the campus. We can't do that anymore, so now that has to be in a separate bond issuance to, to cover the cost of, uh, the infrastructure to get to the school.
Don't you, don't you think there's some protocol that we could use to clarify that this, in fact, is getting ready for a school expansion down in the lower end of the county? Could we come up with a code like S and a star, which means this is gonna be? You know, you, you read this resolution, there's nothing in here. There's, there's nothing in this resolution says we're gonna do anything in an area where we got to have it because we gotta build some more school. And, and if there's any cute trick we can pull, I wish somebody pulled a rabbit out of that.
My, my- I think it, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, go ahead. I'm sorry.
My worry about that is that, uh, I'd feel a whole lot better if it was, in fact, designated, because we have funny notions, everyone wants to know, while we hunt money here and there and spend it for things that were never intended to. And so it would be perfectly all right with me if we could get this money obligated to, to at least an area of the county when all of us know it's, we're getting ready for a school, even if the pu- general public don't know that.
Ms. Denham, can we do that?
I think it's in there.
It is in there. If you look at number three, it says to, for construction improvement, renovation, repair, and equipping of county schools, that's as specific as you want to get in a bond resolution, because if, let's say, for example, we use this for, and we use two point nine million to fill in these needs with this school, but there's a hundred thousand left over. If you have named it specifically to this new school project, then that hundred thousand dollars could not be used to, say, make a turn lane at Portland High School.
We don't want one.
Well, all right.
That's good. We don't want a turn lane. Well, it, it, it just, it, it looks like we're, it looks to me like we're a little loose in our business. I'd, I'd much rather know that we're obligating this money to do what is ultimately gonna have to be done than for somebody, you know, thirteen votes, six months from now, we can do whatever we want to, whatever money's left in this. I mean, that, and we're leaving that option open. We're, we're not going into that where they understand it. I mean, maybe we all understand it, but we're not obligating ourselves to put it where we all know that it's gonna be put. So if, if I could-
With that being an amendment, sir, I'll be glad to take it.
What, how do we wanna word it? 'Cause we'll have to make sure that we're-
We'll have to word it specifically for how you want it, because-
Let the chairman of the budget committee come up with that.
Thank you, Mr. Hinton. I appreciate that. Ma'am, how about we just make the amendment state that it's specifically for the infrastructure related to the new campuses, and that anything left over would have to be voted on, again, by the commission.
Okay, commit.
I'm not sure that we can do that.
Okay.
You can do it and find out in thirty days from now if it's legal or not. But we do it.
Hey, hang on, hang on, what's that, the finance director? I'm sorry to cut you off.
Dave, do you have a solution, hopefully?
I, I'm with Leah. I'm kinda concerned of putting any additional language, 'cause this was actually written by the bond counsel. Her specific words were, if it can benefit anybody other than the schools, it cannot be a school bond, which means the water, the sewer, the road, anything other than that turn lane or watering sewer on the campus. I'm afraid if we start changing language tonight, it may not make it through the state of Tennessee for the issuance of this bond. That, that's my concern, and Leah may have a totally different take on it.
No, I, I agree totally with, with Mr. Law.
Get your microphone.
Won't turn it off, there it goes. I agree totally with Mr. Law. The language of these bonds is approved by the state of Tennessee, and that specific would, I think, get it kicked back. Now, we don't want it kicked back, because then, you know, our goal here is to wait when the market is at the best time to sell these bonds, and that will be coming up after the beginning, right after the beginning of the year. If you do this in December, you miss that good window. So it, it's really, I would not, I would not advise doing this.
Okay. I mean, I might as well say that, 'cause we're not going anywhere. I gotta have twelve more with me, and I ain't got them, I don't imagine. Thank you.
All right, are you withdrawing your motion, Mr. Taylor?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We're withdrawing the amendment to the motion, sir.
Okay, yes, the amendment. All right, I see no one else in the queue, so let's vote.
Resolution is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. All twenty-four votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change their vote? With twenty-one affirmative votes, the resolution is approved.
All right. This will be the one, this is eight dash, uh, eighteen eleven dash zero eight. This is authorizing the issuance in one or more series of general obligation school and public improvement bonds of Sumner County, Tennessee, in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed one hundred and three million dollars for the financing schools and certain public projects. I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Paul Goode. We'll go to Mr. Hyde.
Mr. Chairman, um, let me just get it off the table right now that I'm not opposed to these schools. So we'll, we'll take out from there. I am opposed to the site. I had said when we purchased this property that I'm very concerned about, uh, heavy transmission lines going through the middle of the property in a health manner, because we continuously had the issue of, uh, illness at what was the old Knox Doss, and now Merrill Hyde Magnet School, and, uh, particularly with cancer. And, uh, the principal that was there for many years passed away just a couple of years ago with cancer. Uh, one of many on the staff there. So I hope we've made the right decision in this property. I've researched it over and over again, and, uh, have found that, uh, authorities that are closely associated with electrical entities have indicated that it's, uh, no more dangerous than standing in front of an active microwave. Well, I don't know who wants to stand in front of an active microwave, you know, in your kitchen, but, um, I suspect it's a little more dangerous than that. Anyway, to my point, uh, that, since I do not want to be opposed to this school, I wanna ask some questions of our finance director. Uh, the first one would be, um, how, what will this do to debt service? Issuance of a hundred and three million. What capacity will we have left?
After this issuance, we will not have any capacity to the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four. Um, I, the earliest I would recommend the county to issue would be somewhere around January two thousand and twenty-three, and these estimates are based on a revenue-neutral rate and pretty much virtually zero growth in the county. So they're very conservative numbers.
So we're talking about five years before we could do, Mr. Long?
What, I'm sorry, Mr. Hyde?
Don't be taking any cues from anyone else. What, uh, is it five years?
It would actually be, the debt goes down because there's a, um, issuance paid off in the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four, which starts July one, two thou- two thousand and twenty-three. The first payment would not become payable until six months later, so we could issue somewhere around January one, two thousand and twenty-three, and we're issuing this one in nineteen, so somewhere around four years.
So we will deplete our, um, ability to issue bonds?
That's under the assumption of zero growth, which is a very unlikely probability, but I made it as conservative as possible. Yes, that is true with a zero revenue-neutral rate.
I think you probably are, are right. So I'd like to ask the chairman of the, uh, budget committee, and I'm not trying to trap you when I ask, I really wanna know, how are we going to do, uh, this huge bond issue for schools, and then another one that will be similar size for the county judicial building?
That's a very good question, Mr. Hyde, and what we've looked at, and Mr. Long, chime in anytime if I get it a little bit wrong. Bear in mind that what David says is our debt capacity right now is that there's also pre-existing debt in the county already for fifteen, twenty years ago. That's slowly being, that gets paid off, so we constantly have debt being paid off as we've accrued new debt. The courthouse project is not gonna be written as one big check at once. It's gonna be done in parcels as we see fit as a commission to do. It's going to be done in parcels as we see fit as a commission to do, based on what we feel is appropriate. David's assessment, and what he says is very conservative, he's saying zero growth for any part of the county, any revenues or anything like that. We know for a fact we're getting TIF money in two years or so, should be between two and three million. We also expect, we've had increases, and just my telling you, we've had increases in hotel revenue tax each year, in the hundreds of thousands of dollars each year. So even with minimal growth, we're still going to see a lot of increase and that's just based on our current debt capacity. We'll still be able to address smaller issues as they come along because we'll have additional revenue paid off as time goes. Is that right, David, or am I missing it?
There's a couple of factors, as Commissioner Taylor pointed out. One, this does not include any revenue coming back for the Indian Lake TIF, which this current, coming fiscal year is an estimate of about $2.9 million across the county funds. The other things, when I give you this, it does not include any growth, which is very conservative, probably actually unrealistic. And then the third factor is we have after this about 16 point, you know, $16 million into debt service fund. If you look at a couple of things, one, there's been $5.7 million currently appropriated toward the courthouse fund for design all the way to purchase of the property, which will probably be two years. So when you take that and you're taking the factor that you do have some debt service fund where you could push that issuance back further, there's not really a large, large gap there at all. We're talking six months to a year, if that makes sense.
Well, yes, it does. But my next question would be, if we're talking about growth and if I'm understanding you correctly, it would be growth in people in order to sustain additional taxes for debt service, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, if that is the case, then it's like a dog chasing its tail because as we have additional people coming in, we have unexpected and additional costs that are occurring all the time with schools, libraries, ambulance, jails, everything else that we won't be able to keep up with. And I for one, let me say, I am not opposed to growth. My heavens, I came to Hendersonville and to this county in 1967 when there wasn't a traffic light in Hendersonville, not one. There wasn't a Hendersonville.
Could I ask you, Mr. Hyde?
I'm not, I'm not opposed to growth. And like my friend, the fellow commissioner over there said, I don't think very many of us are opposed to growth, but I'm opposed to uncontrolled growth. It's got to be controlled better than what we're doing now. And all I'm saying by that statement is that when we do this, we are putting ourselves in a position of digging the hole deeper because we've created a problem with more growth. I would like to know if we could possibly have the budget committee review this one more time with all of this in mind as to how we're going to stage some of these projects. I would love to vote for this project tonight. I would vote for it if my answers, if my questions were answered. But I'd like to see everything, the judicial center, to tell me specifically, not hypothetically, but specifically how we will stage this to make it work. And then you will have me as a vote on this. And if, if what we're thinking, and I hope this is not the case, folks, but what I'm thinking is that some people may have in their mind that, okay, in two years, there's going to be a reappraisal of property and we just won't reduce the tax rate. So we can go out and tell people, we didn't increase taxes, when in effect we have increased it tremendously by keeping the tax rate as it is. And what does this do to a lot of people in my district that I've represented now for 27 or 28 years? A lot of people in my district cannot afford much more. I can, I can pay it. But there are many people in my district, an average income area, that cannot keep affording the kind of impact that we're placing on them. And I would just beg each commissioner, I'm begging you to please just consider the people who are on pension, who are on social security, who are like the lady that came here when we discussed the issue of the tax increase. She happened to be from my district who said, okay, I live in a nice house on, I think it was Anchor Drive, but I have a disabled son, my husband has died, I'm living on social security and I'm, if you look at the house, okay, it's an okay house because she's lived there over 30 years. But she was going to have to make a choice between prescription drugs for her disabled adult son or moving, so she said. So I would just ask each one of us to try to think of the people that are not as fortunate as we are when we, when we do this. And I hope this is not what we're thinking, that we're going to keep the tax rate at the level it is when we reappraise property because it's almost like, and this is a poor example, but if someone pickpockets me and takes $100 and I don't know it, it's just the same as someone sticking a gun in my face and taking $100. And that's what the reappraisal of property and the impact of taxes is. So I'd, I'd make a motion so that I can vote for this. I would make a motion that we just let the budget committee mull this over one month and bring it back and, and tell me and everyone else how we can specifically structure this and keep moving along as a county rather than plunging ourselves into debt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make that as a motion.
Okay, is that a, is that a, hang on one second, Mr. Taylor. Is that a motion to refer?
To refer it back.
Refer or defer, Mr. Hyde?
Refer.
Refer.
No defer. I want it back next month so I can vote for it.
Mr. Chairman, could I answer Mr. Hyde's question he had of me or should I wait?
Uh, let's, hang on, we got a motion, Mr. Taylor. Got a motion by Mr. Hyde, seconded by Commissioner Mo Taylor, motion to defer. No, refer or defer, Mr. Hyde?
Refer.
Refer, refer, I'm sorry. Okay, it is.
For 30 days.
It is debatable and needs 13 votes, so a vote yes is to vote to refer it to budget. Vote no is to not refer it. Let's vote. What's that? Is anyone wanting to speak specifically to the motion or do you want to speak on the main amendment? Mr. Mansfield, you're next. Are you wanting to speak to Mr. Hyde's motion or do you want to speak on the main? Okay, okay. Let's vote.
Motion to refer is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. 23 votes are entered. With nine affirmative votes, motion to refer fails to carry.
Okay, Mr. Mansfield. I'm sorry. Hang on one second, Mr. Mansfield. There we go.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a couple of questions. First one is, it's been posed to me by citizens throughout the county. Why is it that our county government is structured in such a way that requires us to financially cover, cover or be obligated for decisions that we are not responsible for making?
Would you have to, Mr. Dennis?
The state legislature?
The Tennessee constitution and the state legislature. I mean, like the state of Kentucky several years ago gave the boards of education taxing power. The state of Tennessee has not seen fit to do that.
So part of the state constitution or the Tennessee code annotated, it is a statute saying that we as a county, even though we're obligated to pay for decisions that the cities made, we don't have any control over those decisions.
This is not schools or not a city now.
He's talking about the cities, like with growth. Mr. Mansfield, he's talking about growth.
Yeah, I can explain further, but I'll just, you know, I want to ask.
The, the decisions made by the cities of growth, for growth are just, they happen to be in our county and we bear the burden of that responsibility.
So I guess that's part of what, what I'm seeing as a root cause to problems that we're having with growth in our county. Again, as has been said by the senior commissioner, Mr. Hyde and also Mr. Taylor, that nobody is opposed to building new schools or opposed to growth. We all want our children to have adequate facilities. We want our teachers to have adequate class sizes. But at the end of the day, what I see is, as a larger problem, and it's something that I went before the city of Hendersonville, I was asked by citizens throughout the county, I was asked by citizens in that district to come and speak against a rezoning effort that was putting stress on the station camp school complex. And the problem is, is that I see and a lot of others see is that we as a county are responsible for funding things that we don't control, such as zoning and efforts that the cities put forth for growth. I know at the Hendersonville rezoning issue from their planning commission for Forest Park, I know that members of the planning commission, when parents, teachers, children, you know, homeowners in that area where the Jenkins farm is, that they were trying to say, hey, we, we don't need this, we don't want this type of growth here, we don't want, just, we don't want this. And the current zoning plan there was for 200 plus homes, estate sized lots. One thing that Hendersonville does not have is estate sized lots and there's a lot of people who would like that. But one of the, the issues that I had with the response of the planning commission in Hendersonville, and it seems to be systemic throughout our system, is they didn't care what their decisions, how it affected us as county legislators. Some of the, the answers that were given by the planning commission was that if you've got a problem with overgrowth in the schools, we'll go talk to the county about it. If you've got a problem with roads, talk to the county or talk to TDOT about it. And I found those, those statements rather callous and irresponsible because again, we are responsible, we're stuck between a rock and a hard place. It's not an enviable position to be in as a county in how to properly manage growth, you know, and growth is good, but not all growth is good. There are things that grow in nature that are bad. You know, cancer is a growth and it is not a good growth. I'm not comparing growth in this county to cancer, but I'm saying there are things that do grow that are they not monitored correctly or done in a sustainable way that doesn't increase the burden on taxpayers for, for things like infrastructure, for roads, for, for the schools, for fire and police and emergency, emergency and medical services. And so I want to know, is there anything that we can do as a legislative body to, because my question, a follow-up question that Ms. Denham is, what can we do to, I guess petition the state government to give us, if we're having to, to pay for growth that the cities don't care about what, how it affects us, because we've been told to from the planning commissions, at least in Hendersonville, what can we do to change that law or to give us more, the ability to have more say into what we're having to pay for at the city level? Because their growth is what's causing the overcrowding, the schools that we're responsible for.
Seek a metro government.
Excuse me?
Seek a metro government.
So that is the only recourse that we have?
Until the statutes are amended, the only recourse that we have would be to take over the cities and seek a metro government.
Well, at the state level, so there is, again, you're saying that, but I'm asking what at the state level can we do? I'm not talking about us locally, as petitioning the state to change the law.
I mean, there, there's, there's many ways the law could be changed, but you have to realize that when you make changes across the state, they have to be accepted across the state. And so we're in a good situation where people want to move to middle Tennessee. There are areas in west Tennessee or in east Tennessee where people may be leaving cities and going into the counties or people may be leaving. So some of the legislation that could potentially be proposed would not be accepted by those representatives because it would hurt them. And so presently, to my knowledge, the only option that we would have under the existing laws is to propose a metro government.
Second part of my question is, again, we've talked, talked about plans tonight and there's a plan, I know, for a judicial center complex, which the estimates are $100 million. There's also a plan for a middle school because this two school complex does not include a middle school as of yet. I guess first question about that is, what, I've heard several different answers on the timeframe for this middle school. Can somebody answer when it is, when we would need to borrow money for that?
Probably 2025, 2026 would be the soonest that we would need it, but you know, the reality is if you look at the packet, I think, Mr. Mansfield, you were at the board meeting when we passed out the.
I was not.
Okay, or at the, you were at the commission meeting, the combined.
Yes, we did.
So if you, Dr. Phillips gave us the capacities of the schools and where we are right now. That, you know, the reality is, once these schools are built, the two schools, we've got quite a bit more capacity. So, you know, I know, and we can ask Dr. Phillips, but my understanding from conversations with him is we probably look in 25, 26 before we would need the middle school.
Before we would need it built or before we would need to borrow money for it?
I'm going to, without objection, we'll suspend the rules, let Dr. Phillips answer that.
I think that you probably are going to need to open a middle school about 26. So lead time, it would be pad ready, infrastructure there, so I think the lead time to borrow money and build a school would be sure, then.
So by 2024, you would need to borrow the money for the school?
Depending on the lead time, I think it would be closer to a year, so probably 25 or 26. And I'm saying that based on the things pad ready, the time to build the campus, the middle school would be a lot.
Does, can I ask more questions, the director? Does the plan for the current two school facility?
Dr. Phillips, if you could step to this microphone so we can get you on the recording. Sorry, Mr. Mansfield.
Yep, thank you. Does the plan for this current two school facility that is the combined high school and junior high, I don't remember if it's been set up, forgive me, as far as like athletic complexes for ball fields for like senior high football, junior high football since we're combining it, or soccer fields or baseball fields or tennis courts or whatever facilities are needed, are those included in the overall budget of the 103 million dollars?
They are.
For the, and so how many football fields are we building for this?
Just one, you only play one, one football game.
What, for, so the junior high, then for a separate junior high facility?
Practice fields are more important than game fields as far as that's concerned. So the bulk of the money, as far as the fields are concerned, there'll be soccer fields and practice fields, Commissioner Mansfield, but all of that we've tried to build into this. So when I say pad ready, really the only thing that'll be left to do in 25, 26 will be just construct the building and the parking lot area for the middle school.
Okay. Thank you. That's all the questions I have for you.
Thank you, Dr. Phillips.
So as has been alluded to here already, as far as what our plan is for. What our plan is as a county, and so I'm not exactly quite sure on some of the answers that have been given, knowing that we have, you know, a judicial complex that as far, as far as I can have heard conversation, the county is planning on moving forward with, concurrently with this new school complex. How is, I just, I just want to confirm that when the new, I guess assessments come out in June, this coming 2019 for the property assessor, he's already alluded to the fact that the new rate, the certified rate, the revenue neutral tax rate will be around $1.80 something. And so is it the intent, and Commissioner Hyde has asked this question a little bit, I don't know if he got fully an answer, at least not the answer that I was looking for, is the intent to have certify that rate and are we able to fund this judicial court complex as well as this school borrowing when we certify the new lower tax rate that's going to be around?
Mr. Mansfield, we're not going to be able to speak on the certified tax rate because Mr. Isbell is a constitutionally elected official that's responsible solely for conducting that reassessment. So I know there's been a number thrown out there of a dollar, I think it was $1.82, but you know, until, until we get clarification. think it was $1.82, but, you know, until, until we get clarification from Mr. Isbell, when we get the report of what the certified tax rate is, we're just speculating, which is way off the focus of the resolution, which is the bonds. So I don't think we can really talk about that tonight.
Sure, okay. Is the intent to exceed the certified tax rate and keep it at $2.50 in June, is that the intent of the county commission, or are we going to?
Again, we can't really comment until we know from Mr. Isbell what the tax rate's gonna be.
So we're not, as part of the plan on funding this judicial court complex and this new school complex, we are not including that as part of the equation, is that what I'm hearing correct?
Right, right. The current debt capacity is based on what we have right now, not, not a projection based on what will happen in the future.
So, is the current plan for the judicial court complex not to borrow money until 2024?
Well, right now, we're in, my, it's Miss Dinnon, it's Stephanie, or Michelle, actually, too. But basically, where we are right now, we've already paid the architectural fees. Our preliminary estimates are that it will take about two years to design. So, really, we're looking probably 2021, before we're even ready to break ground on the first stage. And as Mr. Taylor mentioned, or Mr. Chris Taylor mentioned earlier, the judicial building is not a one-stop-drop-in, $100 million project. It's phased out over eight to 10 years with smaller increments. So, we're not looking at 2021, saying we've gotta come up with $100 million in capital. My understanding, and Michelle can correct me if I'm wrong, is, is that there will be multiple stages over eight to 10 years with smaller dollar amounts. So it's not gonna be, you know, it's not another huge $100 million, like we're doing a $100 million school project tonight, and then looking at another $100 million project six months or a year down the road. We've got some flexibility and leeway, as Commissioner Chris Taylor mentioned, we've got about $2.9 million of TIF funding coming in in about two years that will give us some flexibility. Mr. Lawing's numbers presume zero growth, which, I mean, at some point, we will hit a recession, but until that point, you know, we will have some positive growth, plus, as Commissioner Chris Taylor mentioned, the paying off of existing debt as we move. So, you know, it's a little more complex picture than to just say we've gotta come up, we've gotta have the ability to raise $100 million in the next year or two, because we're two years out on even being able to break ground until we get the architectural plans.
I guess I do wish Mr. Hyde's amendment would have passed, simply for the fact of being able to see that a little bit more, a clearer picture and a little bit more of a timeline. So it's unfortunate that we did not pass that tonight. You did bring up a good point, that there is concerns in the building community with a cooling down of the rate of residential growth, which we as a county, as Commissioner Hyde has alluded to, is kind of like a dog chasing its own tail. It's just, it's a kind of a vicious cycle of depending on that kind of growth. And so, that is another concern of mine, as far as our debt capacity and taking on debt, is the fact that we are looking at a cooling down market by all indicators. And there, I just, I see trouble on the horizon. I think we're entering into dangerous waters, as far as the amount of debt we're getting ready to put our county into over the next several years. And so, I have concerns about that, and so do a lot of citizens who have voiced their opinions. So I'm just here to represent them tonight and ask these questions. So thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mansfield. Commissioner Graves.
So many questions have went unanswered. I don't forgot my question, kind of, but anyway, I guess what I'm seeing, seeing that over the next five to 10 years, looks like about $300 million. My question, if it is five to 10 years, what is our plan to pay that money back at this point? We've got the plan to borrow, but do we have a plan to pay it back?
Well, I think, Commissioner Graves, I think really, for this resolution, all we can really talk about is, you know, we're dealing with our current debt capacity, not future things for the courthouse or anything like that. But we can, we're paying it back in our current structure. So when we borrow this money, we have the capacity to pay back the current debt in our, you know, in our current budget.
With no growth?
With no growth.
No growth?
Yes, sir.
What about these millions of dollars worth of houses we're building, apartments right now? What if this market goes stale like it did in 2007, '08, somewhere in that neighborhood? What will that do to our bond that we owe now already 70...
A little over $143 million.
$143 million plus $103? Okay. $143 million, and $103 more million. If it goes stale again, I mean, we're getting in, we're getting in a hurry. I'm like Commissioner Hyde, I'm not speaking for him, but I'm like Commissioner Hyde, I like to vote for this. But we've been looking at, well, we're getting pushing $300 million with what we've got going on now. And we're spending $5.7 million for architectural fees, that we don't even have a piece of property that we want. Evidently, we want the other one, but we don't have no agreement on that. And then we've got a courthouse, and this may not have to do with this bond issue today, but it is to do when we spend $5.7 million for architectural fees. And we not only have parking places for that new complex, and the new property out on Upper Station Camp for the schools, I don't know no figures on infrastructure. Like, one of the commissioners said, we didn't pave that road out through here, but in this next 29th time that would open, we're gonna have to redo that road again.
I believe, Mr. Graves, I can speak to that. The issuance that we have for the infrastructure for the new school is included in the, in what we're doing tonight. The $3 million bond that we approved already was for infrastructure improvements, to include the roadways on the far side of the campus, on the Hunter's Lane part, and then the upper station.
County roads?
Yes, sir.
What about the infrastructure that's outside the White House utility? Is that gonna include that also?
Yeah, for the sewer lines.
Yeah, sewer lines, water lines, upgrades, or whatever.
Yes, sir.
Outside the campus, not inside.
Yes, sir. To get, that's why we had to do that separate $3 million that we already approved. That's to cover, because the state has a new way of looking at bonds. Used to, you could roll all that into a school bond. Now it has to be separate. So the first bond that we've already approved was to run the sewer lines, to do the road infrastructure, all that stuff to support the school. I can't answer that one for you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have one more question on that. I didn't get an answer on how we pay that back. What kind of funds is that coming out of, or is it coming out of?
I'm gonna let Mr. Lawing answer that one, Mr. Graves.
It comes from our debt.
Can you hit it? Okay, we got you.
I think it turned red again. It comes from our debt service fund, the fund where we pay all of our bonds. And these bonds are structured as a 20-year equal amortization over a 20-year period, as was our previous.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. Mr. Wright.
Hang on one second, Mr. Wright. There you go.
All right. I have a couple of questions, and one of them maybe Mr. Phillips can answer. We have seen in the past that growth slows down. We are in a building boom right now, but it will slow down. I don't want to see us get stuck as a county with a huge burden that we cannot fulfill. We have school buses that are not running. We have other things within the school system that are not fulfilled. And here, we are gonna expand. We need to take care of what we already have before we start taking on more obligation. Now, this is directed to you, Mr. Phillips. Can you answer me, how many kids go to Station Camp out of zone?
Hang, hang on one second, Mr. Wright. Mr. Guebe?
Please, direct to check.
Yeah, Mr. Wright, you can direct it to me, and then I'll get, we'll suspend the rules, let Dr. Phillips talk.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Yeah. I do think, you know, Mr. Wright, just to respond, based on the documents that we received at the combined committee meetings, you know, one of the things we're looking at, Howard Elementary is at 114% capacity currently, Jack Anderson Elementary is at 93.4, Station Camp Elementary is at 99.6, Station Camp Middle is at 102.4, Rucker-Stewart Middle is at 110.2, Galton High is at 96.2. You know, when you look at the projections of growth, for instance, Station Camp Elementary and Middle School historically have been increasing about 50 to 57 students a year. This year, they were in the 95 to 103 range. So basically, you know, the school board is in the process of examining a phase-one rezoning to shift kids around capacity-wise, because we have some schools with capacity that we can move those students into. But that's not a long-term solution.
Right.
And so, the reason why we're moving towards, why the school board approved the Station Camp, the Upper Station Camp campus, and sent it to us to look at, is due to the, due to the fact that if you look at those current projections and growth, as Commissioner Mo Taylor mentioned earlier, I think it was, I think it was Commissioner Mo Taylor, correct me if I'm wrong, Mo, but basically, you know, the City of Hendersonville's already approved 600 more houses in that area. So, the growth is not gonna go down there anytime soon. So we're looking at, you know, the last four years, a lot of effort has been put in to remove the portables from the school campuses and move away from that. So, basically, what we're looking at is, if we don't do something around the time we hit that 2022, 2023 school year, 21, 22 school year, we're going to have to roll out massive numbers of portables to use. So that's, that's part of the, that's part of the capacity issue, is that we're nearing, we're nearing max capacity in those schools.
And do we have any figures as far as what it's gonna cost to staff these two new schools?
Not currently, no.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Tinsley.
So, a couple of things. First of all, I'm probably the most recent summer county school graduate in this room.
Probably so.
And I will, I will tell you that going to Station Camp High School and graduating from Station Camp High School, and having most of your senior classes outside in a portable, was not a very fun experience. But we're in a, we're in a weird position as a county, because as Commissioner Mansfield said, Hendersonville has approved homes in the area, and we cannot tell them that they cannot build homes there as a county government. So unfortunately, we're in a position where we're gonna have to either add a bunch of portables to the Station Camp school system, along with the reorganization. But we're gonna have to build the school. And that's, that's the unfortunate thing that where we're at as a county. And I know a lot of people have talked about the slowing it down of the building market, but in turn, we are in a position where we have to build these. And I think that's something that we have to remember, is that these people are going, these homes are gonna be built, and people are gonna move here, and they're gonna expect a school for their children to go to.
Thank you, Mr. Tinsley. Commissioner Ring.
Thank you, sir. One of the classes I teach is economics. And one of the things we talk about in economics is we don't cry over spilled milk. We can't control anything that's happened in the past. We can't have, we don't have much control over anything that's gonna happen in the future. We need a school. People who've opposed, who have spoken against this bond issue have not come up with another alternative. There's only one way to build schools, that's to borrow the money. We don't have a savings account that has $100 million in it to build schools with, and we never will. So, it's like building a house. If you want to build a house, unless you are independently wealthy, you have to borrow money to build the house. You pay it off over a period of years, it's free and clear. That's what we do with school systems. We've built one or two new schools in the last few years. There are counties that are, that during a growth period have been building a new school every single year. I mean, we have not had that yet, but we're gonna probably be moving in that direction if this, if growth rate continues. You know, whether you like to borrow money or not, we have to, to build a new school, unless somebody can come up with another alternative. I heard somebody speaking again about the schools and not wanting to do this. They said, well, we just need to put a bunch of portables at schools. I taught in a portable for two years. I didn't have an objection to teaching in a portable, except in the wintertime, when the temperature never got above 60 degrees in my portable, or in the summertime, when it never got below 90 degrees in my portable, or in the fall and the spring. So, you know, I, we don't, we did a lot, did a lot to get rid of portables. We don't need to become the school system of portables like we were four or five years ago. So, I believe we need to move on and pass this. And this is, the only discussion we should be having tonight is, do we need this bond issue to build a new school? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ring. Commissioner Becker.
Yes, and the finance director may have to answer this. But, so, issuing the bonds, I get the bond now versus a month from now. I think Ms. Dinnon touched on it earlier, but I don't know if you got a, how good your crystal ball is, but from an interest rate standpoint or whatnot, timing-wise, how much money could, are we looking at potentially saving if we issue it now versus a month from now, if that makes sense?
Mr. Lawing.
It is my understanding that the most advantageous time is early in January. And we actually have Ms. Graham, which is our financial advisor on this particular issuance, and she may be able to talk to you a little more detail about what she thinks, the possible effects of issuing later versus in January. Would you like to?
Without objection, we'll let Ms. Graham speak. Ms. Graham, if you can come to this microphone right at the corner there. Ms. Graham. Ms. Graham, if you could state your name, for the record.
Julianne Brennan. I couldn't see who asked the question, so I don't know who to...
That's right there, Mr. Becker.
I apologize, Mr. Becker. I believe your question was if it is advantageous to issue the bonds sooner rather than later. And we've taken a look at the calendar, and over a period of years, it certainly seems to be very advantageous to be one of the first deals out in the market in January. And I believe Mr. Lawing's mentioned that a couple of times. Bond issuance in the state of Tennessee and the country as a whole in the last year has been down over the last couple of years. In October, we had kind of a flux of issuance. But it looks like January would be a good time. I know the Federal Reserve, there are some questions as to what they may do. There is an expectation, I believe, already kind of built into the bond market, that possibly rates will be raised in December. But the expectation for the coming year, of course, we don't have a crystal ball, but is that rates will probably continue to rise a little bit. We certainly are at much higher rates. When I say much higher rates, I mean about a percentage point higher in the last year. So, the longer that you put off issuance, my advice would be that probably, you're probably looking at higher interest rates the further that you wait, if maybe you put it off till, say, the second quarter next year, or even later. Certainly, I would advise that you take advantage of being, getting that very first look in the market. Okay.
Mr. Becker, is that, okay. Mr. Hinton?
I'm gonna vote for this money, because when I voted to buy land to build a school on, I knew that ultimately, I was gonna be asked to vote for money to build a school. But the old folks used to always walk to school, and it's uphill both ways, you know, and it snowed every day, even in July.
Yes.
But, and of course, we don't want to go back to that. But I am here to say to you, those of you that have, and you get this all the time from old folks, so just get ready, you don't know what it's like to be here with this body with no money. I know what it's like to be a member of this body with no money. Now, the taxes were increased four, five years ago, whatever it was, and we've been kind of highballing. We've been kind of rolling in the cash. We, ain't much come through here that anybody says, we just can't afford that. But you can get in that shape. This body can, you can, we can keep this up long enough, and we can get ourselves in that shape.
can get ourselves in that shape. Now, you say, well, you'll just vote for the taxpayer to pay more money. Yeah, you can, you can do that. You can do that if you think that's the appropriate thing to do. But everybody needs to take a long breath. Everybody, everybody needs to reflect when you get home tonight about this, all this has gone on here, because we're, we're talking about a hundred million dollars like we're talking about buying a used Volkswagen, and another hundred million for a trailer to go behind it, you know? We, we just, it don't make no difference how much it is. I mean, it's amazing to me, if, if, if some of the people that I remember could have been here tonight when this, when all this discussion was going on, they'd have flipped their tombstone, you know, if they'd heard what was going on here tonight. But it, it is a lot of money, and it costs a lot of money. And, and it's, and it's going to be more, because we've got a business moving to Nashville that's going to hire 5,000, 5,000 jobs, so you assume it's 5,000 households. If we get half of them, and we very likely will get half of them, you know, right now we're, we're spending about a little over $12,000 a year per child that goes into our school. Once we throw this other hundred million in on top of that, that may go up to like 14,000 per child. Fourteen, if somebody gets married at 20 years old and moves to Sumner County, right away has two children, they can live in that house and pay taxes till they're a hundred, and they'll never reimburse Sumner County for educating their kids. It, it, it's not a money-making proposition. It's not at all. But it's necessary. So with necessity, we'll have to do what we have to do. And like I said, I'm going to, I'm going to vote for this money. And I'm going to, I, I have no, I have no strong misgivings about the money not being utilized the way we intend for it to do. That we'll have a, we'll have a school project down there that's going to accommodate the community, give us a little slack, and take some of that pressure off of it. But we're loading ourselves pretty good now. We're, we're loading ourselves pretty, and, and Mr. Lawing is not, he's not, he's not made us feel cheery with some of the statements he made. I mean, he, we say, well, you know, he's talking zero growth, zero growth. Guess what? It ain't been too many years ago that was, it's exactly what we was getting, zero growth, exactly what we was getting. And we can, we can go to that again. We still have to pay the bills if you don't get any growth in the county to pay any more taxes. So, and I'd like to call for the question, please.
Okay. Mr. Ms. Hinton calls for the question. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Echols. Hang on one second. We're going to get there, and then we'll vote.
All right.
Okay. Yes, if you vote, if you hit the green button to vote yes, you're voting to support the call of the question. We'll have no more discussion, and we'll vote. And if, if you vote no, then we'll continue discussion on the resolution.
Okay. Call for the questions on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty-three votes are entered. Anyone not voting, wishing to vote? Anyone wishing to change your vote? With 18 affirmative votes, call for the question receives necessary two-thirds vote. We are back on the resolution 1811-08.
And we will vote.
Okay, the resolution is now on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty-three votes are entered. Anyone not voting wishing to vote? Anyone wishing to change your vote? Eighteen affirmative votes, resolution is approved.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Mr. Taylor?
Yeah, I got you. Okay. Uh, resolution 1811-09 appropriating $165,415 to the Health Department for amended DGA grant funding for fiscal year 2019. So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor. Second by Commissioner Sullivan. Commissioner Graves, are you in, he's, are you in the queue on this one?
No, I was on the queue a lot.
Okay. All right, we're going to vote.
Which one am I on?
We're on 1811-09, $165,000 to the Health Department for amended DGA grant funding.
What about the last? It passed.
It passed.
Do you have a vote?
Mr. Commandant voted for you, Mr. Graves. Don't worry about, no, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. I'm kidding. He did not. All right. I see no discussion. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Chairman, you didn't fill me in on what's going on.
Well, it passed, Mr. Graves. It was, uh, it was $165,415 to the Health Department for amended DGA grant funding for fiscal year 2019.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we're going to recognize him now.
Hang on. Uh, yeah, we'll recognize him now. Go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Graves.
I make a motion, I make a motion for a five-minute break.
I don't know. Almost there.
Well, we only have one more.
I don't care.
Less water, just great. One more.
Can we, can we do two more, Mr. Graves?
Two more? He said one.
We got two more. I, I don't think, I don't think either one will be long. If, if they are, if a bunch of people queue up, then we'll take a break.
Is it possible to me vote on that other resolution?
Yes, sir.
Right now, 103 million?
Yes, sir. How do you wish to vote?
I'm not going to vote.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Taylor.
Somebody made a man, man. I'm sorry, sir. Uh, 1811-10, budget purchase order carryover for fiscal year 2018 for the Financial Department. If anyone has any questions, Mr. Lawing can expound on that one.
Okay, we got a motion.
So moved.
Second by Mr. Nipper. Uh, no one's in the queue. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Last one, 1811-11. This is a resolution documenting the details or the estimates of the two night, of the 200, 2019 bond, 2019 bond.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Goode. Uh, Commissioner Mo Taylor?
I have a comment not to the resolution, but I wanted to make it before we adjourn.
Okay.
Are we voting no in the dark?
This, okay, you wanted to wait before we adjourn. Okay. All right. So no one, no one else in the queue? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Mo Taylor?
Mr. Kemp, could you please show me his voting no on 1811-01?
That's a courthouse project manager agreement, Mr. Taylor?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Move to the chair.
We adjourn.